The hour is now 6:30 and it would be my pleasure to call to order the first regular meeting of 2013 of the West Valley City Council. And by way of roll call, note that all members of the council are present with the exception of Mayor Winder, who's a full voting member of this council and has been asked to be excused. Joining us on the dais tonight is our city recorder, Ms. Sherri McKendrick, back for another year, as well as representing the staff, our city manager, Mr. Wayne Pyle, who'll be introducing and giving us information on the items of business that we have before us tonight. Each week we give a member of the city council the opportunity to set the tone of the meeting with an opening ceremony, and this week's responsibility falls to at-large council member Don Christensen. Council member?
Thank you. I would just ask that we all rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in peace, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all those in the audience that have came, the members of the press, especially the scouts that helped us with that Pledge of Allegiance. And under item four of our business, we do special recognitions, and we like to recognize the scouts under this. And so if you could have a spokesman from your group, quickly elect one, it looks like you already have one, if you'd just come forward and tell us your name and your group and what brings you here tonight. And we also like to know roughly what part of the city you live in, and sometimes that's best accomplished by school or a neighborhood park, so.
My name is Skylar Richardson, and I'm with Troop 96 and 815, and we're...I go to Hunter Junior High, and right now we're learning how to get the students' internship in the community merit badge.
Okay, well, thank you, and appreciate you and everyone's attendance here tonight in our local government. Item four on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meetings we had held on December 11th and December 18th that were regular meetings, so council members?
I would move for approval of the minutes of December 11th and December 18th.
Second. Motion to approve the minutes of our December 11th and 18th meetings, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Appears to be unanimous. Those minutes are approved. Item six is the time we set aside each meeting for comments from the public, as well as members of this council here. And we do have a setup tonight. Mr. Cunningham, did you want to use this time to speak, or did you want to speak during the...some of the other things, but we recognize you're here, and there's no one else that have come to use the public comment period that is mentioned, the time to speak on items that are not for public hearings tonight. Could move on, and is there any members of the city council that have comments tonight, or from the city manager? Okay, we can close our comment period. I move to item seven, which is our public hearing tonight, and ask our city manager to please introduce that public hearing for us, please.
Thank you, sir. As we all know, the city is operated on a budget basis that we approve once a year, and that budget reflects the expenditure policy and the direction of the council. We also, because obviously there are changes that happen during the year, twice a year we have a budget reopening, and in that budget reopening, we address matters such as grant, grant monies that have been taken in, or capital expenditure projects, or other changes that came in those six-month periods. So this is the time for the first of those in our budget year, fiscal year 2012 and 2013 that we are considering, sir.
Okay. I'll now open the public hearing and ask if there's any members of the public that have come to address the council on ordinance 1301, which would be amending the annual budget. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and council members, before you is the ordinance. And do you have any questions or comments need for clarifications? And if not, a motion is in order.
I'll move for approval of ordinance 13-01.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1301. Is there any discussion to that motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question and ask all those in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
That appears to be unanimous. Mr. Pyle, we introduce Public Hearing B, application S162012, please.
Thank you, sir. So we have a proposal for final plat approval and amendment to a specific lot within the Cold Plaza Phase III subdivision. This is Lot 5. And as you know, this commercial subdivision has been in place for a number of years. This is largely a cleanup item to the plat as it exists, as Mr. Cunningham has requested. The council, I might note, has seen and reviewed that amendment. I guess it's been two weeks, or three weeks ago now.
Okay, we'll now open this public hearing regarding application S162012. So anybody come to speak on this matter tonight? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and council members, we have ordinance 1302 before you.
I'll move for approval of ordinance 13-02.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve said ordinance. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote and ask all those in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Also appears to be unanimous, and as was mentioned, all the items of business that we have tonight, we discussed previously in a study meeting, where we have opportunities to receive information and ask questions and that. So with that, we go to the two resolutions we have tonight, and ask our city manager to introduce Resolution 1301, please.
Thank you, sir. This resolution seeks the approval to purchase new computers for the code enforcement officers. We have 12 computers that we're proposing to purchase under our lease purchase system from HP for $20,095.
Okay, council members, any need for clarification or any questions you might have at this time regarding this resolution? Not a motion would be in order.
I'll move for approval of Resolution 13-01.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1301, authorizing the city to execute a lease purchase agreement. Is there any discussion to that motion? If not, I'll ask all those to please say aye.
Aye.
If you're in favor. And is there any opposed? Mr. Pyle, introduce 1302 for us, please.
Thank you, sir. This resolution would approve a second amendment to our agreement, our lease agreement with AT&amp;T Wireless, and would allow the installation of a third cell tower or antenna on the roof of the family fitness center. This would bring the city an annual revenue amount of $24,654.
Okay, council members?
I'd like to approve things that we revenue the city, so I'll motion that we approve Resolution 1302.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1302. Is there any discussion to that motion? All those in favor, approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Also appears to be unanimous. We have one item of new business tonight. Mr. Pyle, will you introduce application PUD-12012 for us, please?
Thank you, sir. The Henry Walker Homes project, for which we've been discussing and have had much long discussion over the last few years, is here before us for final plat approval. Location of the project is 5315 South and 5700 West. The overall project, when it's completed, will consist of 155 residential units and two commercial pad sites. This first phase, for which they are seeking final plat approval, will consist of 35 residential lots and one commercial lot.
Okay, council members, have any questions or clarifications on this application for tonight? Or motions?
Motion to approve the application number PUD-12012.
A second?
Motion a second to approve application PUD-12012. Is there any discussion to that motion? Mr. Christensen?
I still have reservations about this being the best use of the property in such a transit-rich area, and so at this point, I will register that I will vote against it, so.
Thank you. Any other comments to that? I guess just to add mine, if you'd let me get on my soapbox for 30 seconds or so, I'm in somewhat agreement, Mr. Christensen here, on this application, and part of it being the transit-oriented development part, but the other part of it being that I told myself a while ago to, that identified that one of the problems that I'd like to combat in the city is the...our major roads and with having residences back on them to have walls, and so there's nice communities that have walls all around them, and when you drive down a major road, that you're just in a luge-type thing, and so, you know, I had some, a little bit of stress on that, to where this one does come in and have a number of homes that do back on the 5600 West. But, you know, so I guess I wrestle with kind of breaking my self-imposed pledge on this, but seeing as how that the back piece of this property is very open to the West Ridge area and existing subdivision, as well as trails, and a park that kind of opens it up on the back end, as well as the properties to the north, and as remembering this project when it came through a few years ago, that the amount of tweaking by the developer to get it from a concept stage to this final stage, I think was an impressive feat to take it from where it was to where it's at, to add the amenities on a tricky piece of property. You know, I plan on voting yes with some hesitation, and also, I guess, furthering my resolve that, you know, I will not vote for any other project with houses backing onto major roads coming forward in the future, so. With that, we'll call the question and ask our city recorder for a roll call vote.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
No.
Mr. Roeston?
Aye.
Okay, carries with a vote of five to one, and we will now move to item 10 on our agenda, which is consent agenda, items of two.
Move for approval of the consent agenda, second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the two items of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved now. Now come to item 11, which is a time we have set aside for executive session.
I'd like to move that we have an executive session to discuss property acquisition.
I'll second. Okay. All in favor of convening to executive session to discuss the disposition of real properties, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we will move into that, and this is the last item of our meeting. We will come back from that sometime later to convene of our redevelopment agency meetings and our housing authority meetings, so maybe it might be easier to leave these chambers open and just have the council members reconvene back in the multipurpose room.
That'll be fine.
Okay. And as mentioned, upon completion of this meeting, we, the council, will return to adjourn the regular meeting that has no other business, but then also to convene as the redevelopment board, as well as the housing authority board.
Just so you guys know, that discussion will probably take a little while, and really
Hey, you guys. I mean, for all intents and purposes, you guys came to a meeting and you fulfilled the requirement.
Yeah, we're just talking about what we've seen last night.
That could've been five minutes, but that could've been hours.
Okay, yeah, we're just gonna finish this and then go.
Yeah, that's what they, yeah, they told us, so.
So what they did was the city, they voted on this thing, it was like four or five people that didn't know this, I think, because it wasn't deeply discussed either. Okay. But basically, the revenue didn't exist until the government started running money, and so the contractor would have, if he didn't have his tax, his tax permit, would have seen those taxes through the side, and wouldn't have built, built, you know, couldn't put that money on top of it. So by giving it to him, to have a tax rep, they didn't lose any of the money, but, you know, some $700 worth of taxes that weren't coming in, it was a period of, but would become, if he hadn't built the penny. So now the government in November, they shouldn't have used that.
They didn't need to.
You know, building, they were working for taxes, they had businesses, but it was all those things.
I know we're two of you. That they were expiring, because they wanted to, they don't care about, they don't dare leave. They're everywhere, they're everywhere. He's also working there. And they, this is what we're, it's kind of wild. I mean, trying to get it, it's proportioned as well. It also pays more.
I didn't say swag, I said wet.
There's nothing there.
I'm recording it. Teagan, I can see you. I can see you. They're recording.
My question was, could we talk today with, whether or not that was, or rather, is my first, you know. Wow. Let's go. This is the city council meeting anybody's ever been to. I'm sitting on Cold and Great Plaza, some of the streets. There's always, we can cover, we can tell them.
Like you're walking the camera.
Graffiti, they're probably there with the dealers, because they're the opposite.
Oh, that's nice.
Did you see that somebody climbed up there on, um, Kmart? It's pretty difficult to Kmart. Well, that's pretty important.
I kind of wait for an officer to come, or like, someone to call there. So they go along with it. I'm the primary on the grid, and I work for everybody, and also, I'm a station, I manage the, yeah, I need that. Yeah, so many children, so well, they may not have yet have a, because they're, for insurance, some.
However, it's huge, it's huge, and technologically, it's very bad. So that's going to be, it's supposed to be a long, it's, it's, there's still kids from West Side who go to, 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 to.
Anything that has internet access, or if they're, have, have, they're around the library, or any other, it's, it's, it'll be much closer for you.
Water, sure.
Yeah, she could water. You know, if they have, and they mail it to us, but she's, she's, she's got a certain email that, so, I don't know, that will be, that will, so that we can, if, if, if they're driving, it's something, we need extra information, that we can provide them basically, that will.
I made both my girls drive.
You know, west side, you know, or two, or, or.
Both of my girls want to have a drive, but none of our boys did.
So the game's a trick, so that it's, that's, that's, yeah, we have to do this at their leisure, they want to sit there, jam, as a fill out of form, or they can do so. Sure. Okay, so somebody does the warranty, they say, um, kids, or, or, have a seven-year-old person, they're not, they're, they're, they still call, absolutely, they have, yes, this is, we're, they're, so it is known, they're directly developed, online recording system for many of these crowds, they may still, we're calling them, or they may still call them, or, or.
Where are you, Mr.?
I have a class there, and, 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 Then there's not, help make us more efficient on the freeway. Oh, you see, I'm interested. Well, we're basically, I'm pretty much, you know, one year in Phoenix, we had seventy six. We received a hundred degrees contact. And so, and one of those days will be less weight than one of those times of twenty two responses. It was like the worst summer ever. So if you stay indoors. No one's outside, it's, it's too hot. Workers. Yeah, Phoenix, you know, I work in America, it's a sunscreen summer. And some of these types of, you know, it's realized, trying to kind of. Exactly, the doctors say, you know, everybody, you know, better. Because we're just a little rung. And. And thirteen years. They might keep you up, you know. You were here before. No. You know, it's a frustration for us as well. Sixty five years of the. And. This is, you're like, two hours. Keeping your personality, you can't take this type. And it is frustrating because, you know, you might do this in time to work. You know, other places, you sit around and wait, it's kind of like the old, you know, you're waiting for the. Coming, you're not sure when. Then we go, this way, that way, they can do it at their convenience. Like I said, you know, if they discover this, you know, this they lock the doors away. Then, they, you know, they don't have to come here for a lot of particular things. They just, that was really for their. Sorry, they didn't have to remember. All the time, trying to hear as quickly as I can. What, what is your random? Tell me your. Oh, okay, it's not that. But. I guess I have a college decision. From the. Because, I mean, I've always been also since two thousand three. Which I guess it's been almost ten years now. Time went really fast. And, basically, it's a change in organization. So you're already long, you have suspicions. And, well, then, even. So how do I? So it's kind of. No, what not. Just, no, it's not, sorry. When I went to college, I didn't know what to do. So it's. Somebody who is a journalist. Your husband's by your side. She won a job. My daughter Brooke is graduating. So. Oh, good. Get down. Put yourself through college. Why don't you see what you can write? She's ready to, to composition. To write this kind of letter. And in a lot of her classes, they had to, um, write like journal entries. And. They were per count. And I heard deputy chief. She just wanted to write a book about journal entries, about her. Also. And. He's not this one to write. Our department, but he's not carrying any administrative load from this department. So we're down to basically a captain. Assistant chief. Running all those things that, that's like captains. You. And it was just. This is basically, he's gonna offer. Kind of deal. Or does she want to combine those? All screwing combine those. We like to use costs at Utah State. And sister, she's a whole week. Captain Steve produces now, but she's got it up there. Steve attended the year. And it just makes us more. I, and. She likes. Sergeant, while his friends are deputy. She doesn't like the situation. Yeah, well, she didn't get in, lost the money. So. You can actually find a way, you know, deputy chief Powell still has a lot of information. Obviously, under. So. But sergeant, she's only like two or three hundred dollars difference. So. Will be, um. Like some cases. I don't know. I'm thinking a lot more. It's high on a mission this year. And just. Enjoy. That was kind of. Yeah, it, the end is one size fits all. So it still should be, you know, that number. We're all still friends. I think all these guys. So. Sure. What do you want to be? So. Well, then, help me kiss your kids. No, I don't. So, can I help you marry? Not later, no, not very. And then, that like still in. Kansas City. Our daughter. From Oberon Park. So what do you like doing? Oh, you know, I like, hike. When I say hiking, I mean, like, you know, not the hard hugs. Easy, like to go. Yes. And I think he said, you know. For some of the people, so. Oh, what, did you go see? So, yeah. Recently saw Lincoln. And you seen that? I saw it actually twice. And I'm a Kansas City. And I think there's so much more to say. Yeah. I think I left Martin then too. Yeah. And I saw Flight, which doesn't show Washington. It didn't get a lot, I have a lot of friends, but I thought this was, it's simply some hard drinking and coke snorting pilot. And that's really interesting about how he's in denial of people about this problem. And people are out to the table. It's really subtle. But, there's a scary scene where, you know, the plane starts to fall apart. Yeah, he turned the commercial. Yeah. I'm not afraid to fly, so it didn't bother me. I think if you were afraid to fly, you would be like terrified. That was very good. And then I saw Hitchcock. Yeah. I like that. I like movies in a base. And. And despite further. Cycle thing, because no studio. But, you know. You know, of course, turn out to be as successful as you ever. Yeah. Our kids actually watched everything from all of us. They were good, weren't they? So. It's so good though, because it's not boring. I just need to do a few emails and, you know, break some vibe. Wait, I look at my kids' favorite movies, it's Wait till Mark. Oh, yeah, where she's born, yes. I've seen that too. That's one of my favorites. I'm always going on that one. I think it's really interesting. Oh, no.
Be without a period.
Oh, that's so amazing. I read it. We had actors that looked close though. All the dudes. Theater for stuff like that. Everybody's coming in.
Yeah. It would be.
And that's what. Come on, that's. Well, that's for me. That's something, and that is the.
Yeah. Could be, could be, you and, I mean, your dad might stand there.
Yeah, and then I. Because it's a.
Okay, we've now concluded item eleven on our agenda, which was the executive session to discuss the real properties. And so seeing no other business of this city council, this body will now stand adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the RDA board regular meeting. And note that our opening ceremony has been held and that we have had a roll call on all our present except member Winder. First item on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the minutes for December fourth and December eleventh, two thousand twelve.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion of the minutes? If not, we'll call for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Communications, Mr. Pyle.
I have done, sir, thank you.
Any report?
No, sir.
Okay, public hearing. Do you want to introduce that for us?
Yes, sir, just as we have an item in the regular city council meeting for the semi-annual budget opening. We have that same consideration in the RDA.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this public hearing that we have just opened? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Council, we have the resolution thirteen dash zero one.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of resolution thirteen oh one.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of approving resolution thirteen dash zero one? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Resolution thirteen zero two, Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, sir. We've been in negotiations for some time with Carmike Cinemas, who own the Hollywood Connections facility at thirty two seventeen Decker Lake Drive here in West Valley. And we are proposing to buy that property. Obviously, we're doing that within the RDA structure and we have some redevelopment ideas along, or for that property that we're considering. And we are recommending to the board to approve that purchase at the cost of seven million dollars.
And that seven million dollars is not a all at once right now, but we do have some time to.
That's right, sir. We'd have an earnest money agreement and ninety days to execute that contract.
Thank you. Board members, any discussion?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution thirteen oh two. And just state that this is a big step in helping to see the health center theater grow and improve and remain in our city.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, it's just, it seems like in a lot of ways, the stars are aligning. And so this will be a good thing to keep the momentum up in that area and help with the progress of expanding and renovating and making that area more of the crown jewel than it is already, so.
Mr. Pyle, I have a question about the ninety days. Does it do diligence? Is that right?
Yes, sir. We also have all the normal due diligence abilities and requirements that normally would be built into a purchase contract.
So if we cancel before the ninety days, that we will lose hundred thousand, correct?
We would if all the due diligence situations that were under consideration performed and were assessed in the manner we think that they are. However, there is always, of course, the chance that if for whatever reason some due diligence portion of the contract was not fulfilled, then we wouldn't lose the earnest money.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? If not, let's call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand unanimous. Next item on the agenda is to adjourn the RDA meeting.
And I will call to order the West Valley City Housing Authority regular meeting. Now, we've had an opening ceremony and the same members are present. And we have the approval of the December fourth, two thousand twelve regular meeting minutes.
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor of approving ten minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Any communications or report tonight?
No, sir.
Seeing no other business, then this housing authority will stand adjourned.